We can hear you well, too.
Good. Yukon's winning, 29-12.
Oh, yahoo!
One minute to 7:30.
All right.
What's the score now, Lou?
29 and 12. 30 to 12. Yukon's winning.
If they win tonight, what number did they win? What number in a row is it?
I think it's around, let's see, they lost the last year, so maybe 25?
Well, that's it?
I think so, because last year they lost in the semifinals.
That's right.
And so it would be just this year's, maybe they played 27, 28 games?
It'll be 29.
Hello?
Hi!
Oh, hi, Amy.
Yep.
Very good. We are not quite started. We're going to start in a couple of seconds, so welcome.
Okay. I've got you to just let me know when you need me.
Okay, so can you hear okay?
Yes, I mean, I'm going to mute myself because we're driving in the car.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. It is 7:30. This is the Board of Selectmen, special meeting, Monday, February 26, 2018. And I've called the meeting to order, and we're going to go to the title search and due diligence. We have Carrie Olson, our town attorney here, on 222-230-248 Brownstone Avenue. So I'll turn it over to you, Carrie.
Okay, and good evening. Before I start, how many of you are familiar or have been involved in a lot of real estate transactions? Ben, I know you have, but anybody else? I just don't know how in-depth to get. Okay, so I'll start with baby steps. So when you enter into a purchase and sale agreement, the next step after that is to do a couple of things. One is to obtain a title search of the property that you're about to buy, to see what appears on the land records as far as encumbrances, liens, lis pendens, anything that's irregular, right? Anybody who bought a house went through this process, they got a title search. The next step is to go through the title search and determine what things are problematic, what things tend to get resolved at closing. I mean, those of you again who have bought a house know that things like outstanding real estate taxes get prorated on the date of closing and things get shuffled around. Those are things that will appear on a title search, but generally are not resolved until the day of closing. Other issues such as encumbrances, or liens, or things like that, or mortgages, some of them get taken care of at closing, some of them may be a surprise. And so as part of the due diligence, we do these title searches to determine what might be out there. And pursuant to the purchase and sale agreement, we then are obligated not only to review the title search, but to send a notice to the seller and say, here's all the things that showed up on the title search, and here's all the things that you need to resolve prior to closing. And the purchase and sale agreement is very specific that if we are not satisfied, that they can release whatever needs to be released and unencumber anything that's encumbered, we can walk away. Okay? So you should all be aware that there is this period where you can say, okay, all bets are off. This is not what we were vying for. The other thing that's part of the purchase and sale agreement in this case is other due diligence, things like looking into environmental concerns, a lot of which has already been done. Trying to think what other due diligence you might be doing. You know, in some cases, it might be looking into permitting, if you have things in line that you're thinking of doing with the property. So in this case, we have a 60-day due diligence period in which to bring up these issues of title and any other irregularities that our research shows, and say, look, seller, you either got to fix it, or we have the opportunity to walk away. You have other opportunities, too. You have opportunities to accept some of those irregularities if you think it's in the best interest of the town, et cetera, et cetera. So in this instance, the title search revealed, again, a number of things, many of which are those types of things that get resolved at closing. For example, there's a mortgage on the property. The mortgage gets paid at the closing when we pay the seller the money. Part of that money goes to the bank, it pays off the mortgage, and you get a release on that day. So there's a number of things like that. There are also some easements that appeared, and again, all of this became to light basically on Friday. I guess you guys had a heads-up about it because somebody at a meeting brought it up, but as far as the title search was concerned, we discovered one irregularity that we still need to do some additional research to determine, and that is the issue of a pipeline that runs over property that was formerly owned of Chevron through Brownstone Avenue and across this property to the tanks that still sit on the property. And I know somebody here raised the issue of who owns it, who's responsible for it, you know, what kind of liability are we taking on? So we have delved into this a little bit deeper. We contacted Amy Valencourt, who has been doing the environmental research on the property. We've also gone back through the maps and the deeds that we have in our possession, and we cannot definitively tell you today what your options are going to be vis-à-vis that, but I can tell you that we have 60 days to figure it out, and you can walk away from the sale if you're not satisfied. And I'll give you an example. One of the issues that was brought up, which really presents a question in my mind, is the easement that Chevron gave to Port Oil in order to construct the pipeline on Chevron's property. So my understanding is, the pipeline crosses Chevron's property, goes through Brownstone Avenue, and Portland gave Port Oil an easement to go through Brownstone Avenue, and then the pipe goes onto what was formerly Port Oil property, now the property you're all looking to purchase, to the tanks. So in reviewing that easement, there was a temporary easement to construct the pipeline, and then a permanent easement to maintain, repair, remove, all of that stuff. However, the actual easement agreement, although it calls itself a perpetual easement, really appears to be very specific to Port Oil, and more like what we would call a license, which is personal to Port Oil, which basically Chevron says, you, Port Oil, get to put this pipeline in, and this is personal to you, it doesn't run with the land, we can take it back at any time if we deem it necessary, and the responsibility for the pipeline is yours. So there is a significant question, and this is something that I brought up tonight with our real estate department, in my mind, as to whether any obligations for the pipeline on the Chevron property would run to the town if it acquired the property at all. And again, we don't know the answer to that yet. The title company felt that the pipeline was a benefit to the Port Oil land. I personally disagree. It's not like an easement of access, that you always need access to your property. It's not like water or sewer, you always need water and sewer. To me, an oil-petroleum pipeline is personal to the business, right? And if the business stops, what's the benefit of this pipeline to the property? So I think there's a significant question that needs to be answered on that front. And of course, Portland then is the owner, if you will, of Brownstone Avenue, and if you acquire the property, would be the owner of the pipeline that comes on to the property that you're thinking of purchasing. Now, the question again has also been raised, let's just assume worst-case scenario, you're responsible for the pipeline all the way through, what down the line is going to be your obligation? Are you going to have to remove it? Can you cap it? Can you just drain it and leave it alone? And from that perspective, we asked Amy to communicate with the DEEP and see if they would give her any enlightenment on what their standard procedure has been for pipelines that have basically been abandoned. And I don't know if Amy can hear me and if she wants to weigh in. I don't know if she's received any updates from the DEEP today at all.
Amy, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Susan.
So Carrie has asked, let me just repeat the question. Carrie has asked what you have learned, if anything, from DEEP regarding how the pipe would be dealt with in regard to deep.
Yeah. So I did reach out to the state, and their terminal division under the underground storage tank enforcement, they did indicate to me that all pipelines fall under DOT and Office of the Coast Guard. And so in talking with Dave Keating from DEEP, he was indicating that sometimes DOT and the Coast Guard will default to deep and their regulations when it comes to abandoning, assessing the pipeline. And so it would be typical of, like you would do underground storage tank with the pipeline, you would go along the pipeline and you would assess at a certain interval, 20 feet, 50 feet, 100 feet, depending on the situation. So you could potentially abandon that in place without having to dig it up, but there would require some assessment along the pipeline by the owner.
So Amy, this is Carrie. If I could, so what you're suggesting is, and I think something that I kind of understood, depending on the depth of the pipeline, they may not require removal at all. Is that correct?
It's not really the depth, although it looks like from the maps that were sent over, you know, the proposed pipeline is what it's called in the map, is that it's at four feet below grade. You certainly could make an argument along the route that it's infeasible to dig it off, you know, but you still have to assess it. You don't necessarily have to remove it, but you have to assess it.
Okay. Amy, were you able to come up with any kinds of, even a broad range of estimates as to what it might cost to assess and then ultimately remove the pipeline?
To totally remove the pipeline?
Yeah.
No, I haven't, because in fact, you know, until I hear what the actual route, or, you know, what do we, you know, what's included in ownership, I would need all of that to come up with an estimate. Once I have the linear footage, again, I know the diameter of the pipe, you know, we would have to determine if there's product in it. You know, do we have to get rid of that? So I could give a price, once those pieces of information are provided, I could give a price for abandonment versus removal.
Susan, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Hi, Amy. This is probably going to be for Carrie. Amy, not, this is Ben speaking, just so you know. This will probably be-
Hi, Ben.
This will probably be for Carrie, not you. I think before we get to that, what is the easement, what's the language in Portland's easement as far as this pipe? Because we have, obviously, there's going to be language in the Chevron easement, in the access and the removal. That language, obviously, you've already dug up, but then there's also going to be, what did the town of Portland write into the requirement to allow this pipe at the time? I want to know that. That's very important, because if we are talking about taking it out or not taking it out, and who's going to be responsible as far as cost, that's very relevant. So if we want to talk about capping it in place and all of that, well, that may not be relevant, because if the deed says it's to be removed when it's abandoned, it's going to get removed, period.
Yeah. The deed from the town to Port Oil indicates that the responsibility for the pipeline is solely Port Oil's responsibility. There's nothing in there about abandoning or removing necessarily. Contrarily, in the Chevron easement, it says, if you haven't used it for about 12 months or something, then Chevron can force you to remove it, which is, again, which suggests to me, you can't have a perpetual easement and have the right to shut it off at the same time. So I think there is a real question here as to whether there's any liability for the town in acquiring the property to Chevron for that section of the pipe.
Well, I think it makes sense why you would have, it could be a perpetual easement, and still you would have the 12 months non-use, because that type of pipe not being used could possibly rot.
Right.
So I think that, yes, that would then create a liability to the Chevron people, and that, so therefore, it takes you away from the licensing, and it brings you back to, yeah, it was a perpetual easement. That needs to be operated safely, and I think once you stop operating it, everybody, and Amy could probably testify to this, it does become a safety issue, and then I think it does give the grantor the right to say, hey, get it out.
Well, but again, when you're looking at whether something is a license or an easement, that's only one of the parameters that you look at. The other is whether there's language in there that clearly states that the easement is going to run with the grantee's land. Now, in this case, keep in mind, the grantee's land is Port Oil's land, the land you're looking to buy, okay? Chevron's land is divided by a section of already-town-owned property, i.e. the road. So there's no abutting property rights, right? And again, it's, the way I put it was, okay, so what if I had an easement over Chevron's property to access the waterfront, and I owned other properties somewhere in Portland? Is simply the fact that I own other properties somewhere in Portland enough to say that that easement over Chevron's property runs with the title to my other land? And the answer to that is no. So the question really comes down to is whether this pipeline is considered a pertinent to Port Oil's property, which is the property you're thinking about purchasing, meaning that it was a benefit to it and intended to run with the land. The perpetual easement language, however, doesn't suggest that. It suggests that this was personal to Port Oil. There's a non-assignment clause. In other words, if Port Oil sells their property, this perpetual easement, that they're calling it, stays with Port Oil unless they get permission from Chevron to transfer it. So there's a lot of inconsistencies there that make me pause and say, this is not clear, and there may be no liability whatsoever to Chevron for that section of the pipe. Whether as a matter of public policy or something, you want to be worried about it and think about it, is a different question than the title question. But again, as Amy pointed out, there may be, you have to assess, you don't know, but you have to assess before you can determine whether the town has any liability and/or what that liability would entail, whether you can cap, whether you have to remove, whether there's anything in the pipe, whether what's in the pipe has value. I mean, again, I don't know how long this pipe is right now. I know it's a 12-inch pipe, I believe, and if it's full of petroleum, that might have some value. And that was one of the things that Amy was shocked about, that there would even be oil in there, because from the property end of the line, she thought it was empty. And why would anybody leave stuff in the line if it was of value, right?
Amy, did you look at the pipe that is actually on the property at 248 Brownstone Avenue?
Yes. The pipe itself is cut from the tank, so I'm able to look into the pipe.
And what did you see in that pipe?
A big black hole. Nothing was coming out at me. It looked like it had been abandoned.
Did you put a flashlight down it?
Yeah, we looked inside, and you know, you can see down the pipe, it's open.
Amy, is there a-
So the tanks are open and empty, the pipe is open and empty. You know, I have the decommissioning reports for the site, but they say nothing about a pipeline traveling down the road.
Amy, the young gentleman that spoke at the last meeting thought the pipe was full. Is there potentially a shut-off valve prior to where you were looking with the flashlight, and then therefore, the pipe would still be full to protect the integrity of the pipe?
Again, your guess is as good as mine when it comes to that. Yeah, we have a valve on site. No, I didn't turn it to see if it was holding back any fluid. You know, again, my impression would be, that's a lot of money to be leaving there. I don't think anyone would leave money in the pipe, but I, you know, I don't know at this point.
Well, from what I understand, they would keep the pipe full to protect the integrity of the pipe, so it wouldn't rot, and it would also keep the pressure on the inside of the pipe, so it would never have issues. That's how I go, is hurt these pipes are dealt with.
Have we gotten any response, Carrie, from the owner, the current owner of 248 Brownstone Avenue?
Not as of today, but we are pursuing that.
So what are some things that you're doing in regard to this due diligence? That's what I think we need to know.
Well, one of the things that, and one of the reasons I wanted to talk to you, because again, if you want to move forward, if this doesn't totally scare everybody, which I don't necessarily think it should at this point, we really need a survey. We need somebody to go out there and really survey, and figure out where this pipe is, look at all the maps, figure out the property boundaries, so that we can make a really fair assessment. They need to be able to locate the pipe, especially if Amy's going to do any future work on it. Because the maps that we have are like, people hand-drew lines on a, you know, they're just not, they're not accurate. So from my perspective, and again, based on many of the title search recommendations, a survey to me is a critical next step, and that that should be done expeditiously. The other question, I think that, once we have that, then I think we're in a better position to determine, and I think we have to have a discussion with the title company about the ownership interest vis-à-vis the pipe on the Chevron property. We've got to reach the title insurance company and try to resolve that. I mean, again, I could be wrong, but I think there's an argument. I think there's an argument there, and I think it's worth making. So that's something we have to take up with the title company. Many of the other issues, like I said, are things that don't get resolved until you get to closing, but they're contingent. So the closing doesn't take place unless all of those things are fixed, like mortgages are paid and liens are released and all of that. But this pipe is the only thing that's sort of hanging out there, that's giving everybody quite a bit of pause. We've reached out to the sellers, we've asked them for a status report on the pipeline, for any history they can give us on the pipeline. We're hoping that they're going to be helpful forthwith. We are dealing with an estate, so we don't know how deep their knowledge is. They may say, no idea. But we do have a due diligence period to move forward. And when the pipeline issue came up and showed up on the title report, you know, the question was, you know, we certainly wanted to make sure that every member of the public was aware that we're looking into it, that, you know, it's certainly, the purchase of this property is not going to go forward unless it's resolved to the satisfaction of the town. And that's why we have those contingencies built into the purchase and sale agreement. So I don't know if there are additional, I mean, I can run through every single piece of this title, but that would probably be redundant and boring.
But in the title search, this is the one area that you're researching more.
That's correct.
So I'll move up to the Selectmen for more questions on that. Mike, did you have any questions?
What would be entailed in the survey, Amy or you, and the cost, and who would pay that cost?
Actually, the survey would be a cost that would be incurred by the town. Amy, can you give me an estimate on the survey for this property? I would be guessing without an estimate, but I would say somewhere-
So Carrie?
Yeah.
You're asking for a survey on the property, but do you mean the pipe, the length of pipe?
Well, the survey of the property, in addition to doing research on the location of the pipe-
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I would actually have to get a cost estimate, because I don't know how long the pipe is. You know, I don't know what they're going to charge to follow that pipe down Brownstone Ave. So I can get that, you know. We had an elevation survey done for the site previously for the groundwater flow direction in our modest, and that was done by Martinez Couch. So they're familiar with the site. I would reach back out to them. Carrie, in that document that you have on the title search, is there a description of the pipe that gives the northing-southwest point?
I think there is an Exhibit A where it attempts to provide a meets and bounds on the Chevron property. Is that what you're asking about?
Um, well-
I don't have, on the property itself, to the best of my knowledge, I have nothing.
We do know, Carrie, that in terms of the town, because the town gave an easement to Port Oil back in early 1980.
Right.
And we, Public Works, Rick Kelsey and I, looked at this today, and it appears to be over 1,800 feet from the 248 Brownstone Avenue down to where it would turn into the Chevron property, which kind of makes sense if you're familiar with that area. From that property to the Valley Oil property, it's about a third of a mile or so.
So I will tell you that if, without any, you know, anything written that tells us, you know, the pipe goes south for this many feet, goes east for this feet, what the survey company will do is, we would end up bringing like ground-penetrating radar out there, where they would either try to follow the pipe through ground-penetrating radar, or sometimes they can attach to the pipe and send a signal along the pipe, and they're following that signal, chasing, you know, that length of pipe. So depending on which method we have, you know, that dictates what the cost is going to be. If it's just surveyor and they're following something in a deed that says how many feet that go and turn this way, that's a different story than if I have to have ground-penetrating radar out there with the survey people.
There is a, in the town, because the town granted an easement to Port Oil, there is a map that shows where it starts and where it ends, and a description.
Okay, so that's good. That's potential, yeah.
Just to be clear, Amy, on the easements, Amy, we have meets and bounds of the easement area, but the pipe could lie anywhere within that, right? So you've got a 12-inch pipeline within a 10-foot easement. Do you follow me?
Yes.
Okay. So we have easement language, so that certainly narrows it down, but do we have anything that tells you exactly where the pipe is? The answer to that is no.
Okay. So all that I send to the surveyor, and then they will tell me what they need to survey that pipe. Good.
Anything else, Mike? Lou, did you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I think that Carrie said earlier about she gives pause, and we have 60 days. So I think that we need to find out more before we can have a meeting on Wednesday.
Jim?
With respect to the 60-day clock, do we have an idea of how long it's going to take to get answers, that, you know, that we can fully understand what's going on with this property?
Well, I can tell you, we have not ordered the survey yet. Obviously, the board members were very concerned without talking to all of you and having this meeting about spending any more money on the property without disclosing this issue, so that you could make an informed decision. So, and I'm sure Ben can attest to this, these types of surveys can take a few weeks, but we would hope that we would get somebody on it expeditiously. From my experience, commercial surveys, and again, this could be because of the extra properties involved and pipes, it's like 5,000 to 10,000 for a commercial survey. Would you agree with me, Ben?
If we're talking about an A2, that's a pretty simple. Has an A2 been done on this property before?
Amy, do you know?
No, we only did, like I said, a well elevation survey, groundwater survey for our-
Amy, are you aware if there's an A2 survey on record for this property? Nothing to do with what you did.
No, I don't know if there is one.
Okay. Thank you.
I can tell you, the maps that were provided to me by the title company did not include an A2 survey.
Because if we're doing a survey, an A2 survey, that's one thing. That's not going to be a site, the A2 survey is going to be the boundary survey, then we're going to have to do the pipeline survey, which will be a separate survey.
Right.
Then we're going to have to do a site assessment survey, which is going to need to locate the valves, the pipe, potentially, things like, this is a big deal.
I think we need to talk to the seller, too.
Correct.
Absolutely. They may have a lot of information, right? So I think we need to chase them.
Yes.
But regardless, I think you need to do the survey, at least the boundary-
I would like you to contact the seller. I want to know what they know.
Right.
Because I suspect there are records that they may have access to that were never filed in the town. filed in the town.
And, and being quick, I don't have a map in front of me, does anybody have the assessor's map of this property somewhere, or?
That, I do.
Okay, if, if the, that's fine, if the assessor's map shows numbers, it's been surveyed. See if the assessor's map show a pretty, like, if it says two hundred, it may not have been surveyed. If it says two twenty-one point three, it's been surveyed. That's my, what I'm getting at. What is it, let me see it, please.
Of course, I'll let you see it.
That, that'll tell us a lot.
I don't see.
It's probably.
So it's one, two, three?
It's been, um.
I think one of them might have been, but not the other two, right?
That's what I'm seeing, yeah. This one's around two hundred, that one. This, this guy surveyed his, not, that's, let's see, that's one of the three. This one's been surveyed.
That's one.
It's right down to the, right down to point seven four. So that one def, that one maybe not three hundred even, it's a generic number, three hundred even, generic, generic. So my guess is one of the three has been surveyed. I don't know if they bought that at a later date or how that worked, but if it's already been surveyed, it makes it easier, the surveyor's just recertifying what's on record.
And, and can work off of the stakes that were, for example, if one of the three has been surveyed, they can work from those stakes, which decreases the cost. So I think number one, we want the best knowledge that we can get from the seller, and I think the seller needs to be aware of our questions.
But I, I do want to tell you that I think a survey is going to be required regardless. So I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that, and that's for title purposes also. So because a survey, especially a boundary survey, can disclose irregularities, things that the seller might have to either file affidavits to correct, or, you know, at least it, it puts you on notice, and the title company on notice if there are discrepancies, so.
I guess my first question is, obviously, we've, we've agreed to pay three eighty-five for the, or we've agreed at that price, and then we're going to send it to the voters to decide whether it's going to be.
There's a purchase, just to clarify, Ben?
Yep.
There's a purchase and sale agreement with all conditions that have to be met. So it is, it is not, um, it's not a totally agreed to, it's a purchase and sale agreement with many conditions.
Right.
If this, then that.
What I was getting at was, we've identified seven hundred and fifty in environmental issues on the site that need to be taken care of, and Amy's pretty confident that that number will hit. The three eighty-five number is obviously the purchase, and then I believe we had another twenty-five thousand in closing fees and bonding costs. Where's the survey money coming from?
Well, I can tell you, in terms of, you brought up a question about the, actually, it was several meetings ago, about whether we could use our open space and recreational acquisition fund, which is a fund that we put fifty thousand dollars into every year. And I think you were told we could not use that, so I went back and read the ordinance again with Carrie's review, and that money is set aside for acquisition, and it is set aside for various types of land to be considered for acquisition, and therefore the use of that money that we set aside for acquisition. Among the kinds of lands would be lands near or contiguous to areas suitable for water-oriented recreation, including the Connecticut River and lakes and ponds, and also land that would be contiguous to existing town, state, or privately owned open space. So in reviewing that, there are dollars that we can access if we choose to. There's approximately, I believe, between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there, and then every year fifty thousand dollars is set aside. You'll recall, that's how the Goodrich property was purchased. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. When I brought this to the finance office's attention, it may be that there is a better way in terms of expenditures for this property, as opposed to including it in, and there was a little, and I want to clear up something that was said at the town public hearing, in terms of how the dollars will be spent and from where, that isn't a hundred percent determined. And someone said, oh, this and that, and bonding, and this and that. The intent is, because the park, the sidewalks, the Spring Street Road were all agreed to under one authorization, this would be potentially included in the one authorization, thereby saving the dollars associated when you go out for bonding. So that wasn't clear at the public hearing, because we're not getting into the exact allocation, particularly since we know that these kinds of dollars can be used as well, and that's what it's set aside for. So I think that's an important point.
I, I guess my next question would be, if, if that pipe in, let's assume it, well, I hate assuming things, but if the pipe leaked, at least in the town right of way. Sure. If the, if the pipe leaked in the town's right of way, as of now, where's this going to come from? Who do you see the liability on? If, if, if Amy goes out there to do an assessment, and we find out this pipe leaked in a certain spot for a long time, and a lot of gallons, whose problem is it, who's paying for it?
Today, that problem would be the estate of the lot.
Okay.
According to the, according to the easement, which put all of the onus on that pipe on the estate.
Okay, so as of now, I don't know, oil pipes have the potential to leak over time without an assessment, without knowing what we're getting into here, this is a.
Well, I think the town needs to determine the condition, and I believe that it is the responsibility of the owner of that property. I mean, whether the town was involved in this investigation or not, the easement was granted. It was Carrie Larson at the time, it was first selectman, and she signed the paperwork giving the easement to that company, to Port Oil. Port Oil is responsible for the pipe, given what's written in that easement, just as Port Oil is responsible for the pipeline that's on what was known as the Chevron property. That's clear, and I think there's a great benefit that the gentleman that was at our meeting pointed out, ownership. Because as Carrie has said, this is a little unique, and if anyone, some of you may have been around in nineteen eighty, and you may remember that the Jetline came in, and it comes into the Valley Oil property, and because there were other depots, i.e., Mr., it was Mr. Fa Valley at the time, and Mr. Beletti's property, they could access that Jetline and bring it up in order to have their business and have commerce. So it made a lot of sense to them to be able to bring that pipe through, because at that point, I'm sure while barges were still coming up, that probably presented additional expense that maybe was accommodating or not have to be accommodated with this pipeline. So there's a clear benefit to the property when it's a oil tank farm, when it's a depot. But it's been vacant now for several years, and we all know what happens as property is left vacant for too long. Fortunately, the owner is still responsible in terms of the estate. I don't know the, the content of the estate, the value that this particular probated estate may have, it's something that I think we need to look into, because regardless, as these properties become available and they're not sold, I think you all know what happens to abandoned properties over years. Proactive nature of what we're doing, I think, is protecting us, and we need to make sure that the seller is aware, then very aware, of the responsibility that's well codified in the town records.
I mean, this may be a surprise to all of these heirs.
I don't know.
We just don't know what they know.
Is this property in an LLC, a separate LLC, or?
It's in the estate, I believe, right?
I thought that.
There were some changes that occurred then, I know.
Yeah, there were some trans, um, yeah, estate of Rose Beletti is the owner.
Okay. Amy, this one's for you. How would you assess that pipe to know whether there's any contamination in the right of way, whether it's on Chevron or on Portland? How do you go about assessing that? Pretend money's not the problem right now. How do you assess that?
So we would have to go and do drilling next to the pipe, along the pipe, at certain intervals, um.
Boring, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, well, boring, yes. Drilling, drilling, that's the only way to assess if the pipe has released.
And I'm assuming a third of a mile would be a costly situation?
Let's be clear, this is not our responsibility to do this.
We don't own.
Correct.
Correct, correct, correct. We do not own that property as of now, and I don't believe.
Right.
I don't believe we should put it to vote to the taxpayers till we resolve this major issue, but my question is.
Yes, I agree.
Now that we have identified, we have a pipe, we have identified that this pipe used to carry oil, the town of Portland is considered purchasing property that used to use this pipe, my question is, now knowing it's about a third of a mile, is that, what are we talking here? If you had to guess, and I'm not going to hold you to it. To, to assess whether it had contamination. Obviously, if it has contamination, it's a whole nother animal.
Right.
Because it could be major, major releases through a pressurized pipe.
Why, why would, and who are you asking would do this, Ben?
I, first of all, just want to know for the taxpayers, what, we need to get this answer, whether we buy it or not.
But, but let's just be clear, we don't own this pipeline. This pipeline is sitting in property that's owned by everybody in this room and in this town, so it's our responsibility.
Correct.
To say to the seller, you find out the condition of that pipe, because I read the easement, and the easement says they are responsible for the condition of that property, which is your street, Brownstone Avenue. And in addition, it says they will, they agree to return that property back to the condition that that land was in before they put the pipe in. We're going to hold the, the Port Oil and their heirs to the responsibility that they signed on to in nineteen eighty, just like I would argue that the people that own the Chevron property now would hold accountable Port Oil and their heirs to the condition of the pipe that's on their property. And that's why that gentleman had that question the other night, which I know is a good question.
If they don't have, if the heirs don't have any money, this thing doesn't have the money to cover it, though.
We didn't, we didn't say that, we didn't say that, but that is something I'm asking our attorney to determine, most definitely.
The ownership and what your situation was.
I want to be, I want to be crystal clear here. The town owns that land, we own Brownstone Avenue. The only reason that pipe is in there is because the town of Portland in nineteen eighty gave permission to Port Oil to put that pipe in there with conditions that Halloran and Sage attorneys at the time said, you will maintain that pipe, you will only put petroleum in that pipe, and when it comes to the time that that, that that pipe is no longer, I'm not going to quote, because that's not exactly what it says, but what they're saying is you will return that land, which is town and Portland land, to the condition that it was before you put the pipe in. And the easement that Chevron Oil made, which was very copious in what they wrote, says if after twelve months you're no longer using the pipe, they have the option to notify Port Oil and their heirs, or whoever it might be, that they have to remove that pipe. They have an even more distinct methodology, but let's be clear, we, whether the property is on the table or not, they have responsibility, the town of Portland, and I, I intend to enforce that, and that's why our attorney will contact the sellers, determine that they know what's going on with this pipe. This is owned by us, and I have no intention of paying for that. That's going to be paid for by the responsible party. Whether or not you're buying the land or not, this is something we need to find out as the owners of Brownstone Avenue.
And so the real question at this point is, is it Port Oil and Port Oil's successors who are on the hook? Or is it the people who bought or acquired the property Port Oil owned at the time? That's the question. Is all of this pipe pertinent to this property? Or is all of this pipe personally owned by Port Oil? So are you chasing Port Oil and whoever Port Oil became? Or are you chasing everybody who acquired the property after Port Oil got rid of it?
How are you going to determine that?
That's, that's the, the question that we have to have the battle with the title company.
But, but I, I guess, I think I'm saying it for the twelfth time, but it's very important to the town of Portland to find that answer, and I'm not paying for it as the town of Portland. That will be paid for by whomever is the now responsible party for that pipe.
Who, who performed the title search?
Uh, American.
And you keep mentioning the title insurance company, did, right?
Right, what, what they do is they issue an insurance policy, and like, like any a policy.
Thank you for buying it, by the way, or whoever.
We didn't buy, we didn't buy a policy, yet, no. What happens is they do a title search.
Yep.
And they say, okay, we'll issue a policy, and here's all the exclusions, and those are the exhibits, if you will, to the policy, because what they do is they exclude stuff that, you know, should get taken care of, so, and, and they also exclude stuff that they have no knowledge and have no way of knowing about, which is why you have to do the survey, because if there's an encroachment or something, and you don't do the survey, the title company's not going to cover it.
Who'd, uh, who reviewed the title search after it was done, and when was the title search done?
Uh, well, let's see. It was our real estate department that reviewed it, and I don't know exactly, all I know is it was Friday that I got the word. When did the letter go out? When did she send?
Twenty second.
Twenty second.
The letter that went then to the seller and listed all of the concerns on the, on the.
So I would suspect that she got it a day or two in advance of that? Because again, our obligation of the purchase and sale agreement was to bring to their attention anything under the title search that we were not satisfied with. And so a long list of stuff, which is what, what cautioned Susan, so a long list of stuff went out to the seller, saying you've got to fix all of this before we close, and when she saw the list and this pipe thing came up, then everybody kind of jumped on the wagon, and we had a conference call on Friday and.
And the town, and I, I would suppose Chevron, whoever the owner would be, we need to exercise our rights in the easements that were granted, and they're, they're very clearly written, and I plan on having our attorney determine it. Ralph, did you have any comments or questions?
No, I had a couple of questions about the leak, and Ben's so gracious, he already asked them, so, I guess my only point is obviously we have to mitigate any risk that we have with regards to that, for our potential.
And, and as I said, we will need to determine through the seller what the situation is. What I, what I, what I want to make sure is that we also consider the second item on the agenda, which is the resolution to cancel the special town meeting until, and I'll just read it, be it resolved at the special town meeting to be held on Wednesday, February twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, to discuss and vote on a resolution to approve the purchase of properties located at two-two-two, two-three-zero, and two-four-eight Brownstone Avenue, and an appropriation and bond authorization in the amount of four to ten thousand dollars to finance the purchase is canceled. And of course, the reason for this cancellation is so that our attorneys and our town staff can determine the situation that has arisen through the due diligence of the title search. Is there a motion made to approve this resolution?
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, made by Jim, seconded by Ralph. I'll open it up for discussion. Lou?
No, I think I'm going to go along with that motion.
And I will keep the board apprised, we may need another determining of a special board of selectmen meeting. Of course, everyone is welcome to attend, you are all part of this, so as we proceed, we'll make sure that we make notice so people can attend, and it's a lot easier to tell you this way than to try to get information by email, it just doesn't work, so if you bear with us. I think this is an important issue for our town, and I'll make sure that we keep everyone informed. Are you ready for the question on this resolution?
Not yet.
Yep.
Ben?
Carrie, is there any other issues?
Not yet, Lou.
Okay.
Any other issues that have potential to pop up? And the reason I'm bringing it up, I'm assuming we did this title search quite a while ago, I don't have the date that it was done, but I would like to know that, and I'm sure it was reviewed by your, your real estate department, as the term you used. And we've now identified this luckily from a gentleman that was in the audience in the last public hearing, and I think we all need to thank him, because we could have a serious situation otherwise.
But I do want to tell you one of the things.
No problem, no problem. But I personally want to know now, are there any other issues that are potentially going to come? Do we have to re-review this title, double-check everything? And then I'm going to want costs. We've talked about a survey, we've talked about possibly assessing the pipe in the road, and all of this needs. And all of this needs to be given to the public before any decision is made, before there's any vote on this, because these are big deals. You know, Amy's budget of 750,000, and I think, for the site, Amy, I think you'll do fine, according to your own words, but we've, we've now found another big deal. What other big deals are there? I want to make sure that we have everything ironed out before this goes back to the voters, because quite frankly, it doesn't make us look good.
I just want to tell you, though, that when, after the public hearing, the next day, as I told the selectman, I would ask the question of Jody, who is our, in the real estate division. And when I called her, the letter that was going to the seller, she already had this as one of the conditions, I think it was condition number 13, on the letter that was prepared and had gone to the seller dated the 22nd of February. So we are in the due diligence period, and she had gone through this particular matter, and it had been flagged as something...
All of the things that came back on the title report that were not resolved, went out in a notice to the seller, as was our requirement under the purchase and sale agreement. And Ben, we did not request the title search until the purchase and sale agreement was approved. That would be a waste of the town's money. Until we had a deal, there was no reason to go out to a title search. We have not been at the site. As you heard, there was an environmental assessment, which did not reveal anything of, to Amy, of any concern, until the title search came through, and we realized where this pipeline was going, and that it might, might still be full of oil.
Yeah. In fairness to Amy, she, her job was to assess the actual site. This was an off-site issue, found in the title search, and I'm glad the letter was sent out, but we should have had that information. And I want any other information like that, before I go to another public hearing in front of all the residents, those things need to be disclosed. So if somebody knew enough to put it in a letter, and sending it to the seller, saying this is one of the things that has to be addressed, that's a big deal. The residents need to know about big deals. I want to know if there's any other big deals that are going to come out, because first, it doesn't make, I don't know how the people in the room feel, but it doesn't make the selectmen look good when we're putting a proposal on the table that we missed a big deal, that they were not aware of at that meeting, other than that resident.
But don't forget, don't forget that it is very important that we have public hearings. And that's why people come to public hearings, to give their comments, as well as information and other things that become apparent. And the purchase and sale agreement was signed, I believe, the 26th of January, there, there abouts.
And the title search, again, these things can take weeks. And I don't know the exact date that Jody received it, but I can guarantee you that she didn't sit on it, and that she probably wrote the responsive letter within a day or two of receiving the title search. Again, we don't have a crystal ball, Ben. We, we provide you the information as soon as we get it. And as soon as we got it, Susan was apprised of it. We had an immediate phone call on Friday, and this special meeting was scheduled. So I don't know how much faster we could have moved to inform everybody, but I think nobody's sitting back.
No, time-wise, maybe it was our fault. Maybe we moved forward too quickly. I'm not necessarily implying you didn't move quickly enough. Maybe we moved too quickly to...
No, I disagree. I think that we are proceeding the way we should, and I think that, that we need to do more due diligence. And as soon as we get more information, I will certainly share it with you. I don't know that, that all of the citizens also know, that since about 2014, and then all through 2016 and 17, I know Kitsch was involved, Kathy Richards, Brian Flood, we had many, many, and it's on the record, many, many land acquisition executive sessions, because we didn't have a price that we could agree to. So this has not been a ris, this has not come up suddenly. We have been discussing this in executive session for many, many months, if not a few years. So we can't divulge information until there's a signed purchase and sale agreement. And that was January 26. And that's when we were able to explain to everyone the suggested price in the purchase and sale. So I don't want you to think that there wasn't discussion on this topic for a long time.
Or that anybody's holding anything back. We certainly are more than happy to disclose everything as soon as we get it.
Right.
But to, to address your question about what else can creep up, Ben, I can't tell you until we do the due diligence, which includes a survey. We got to do a survey.
Well, that brings me to my next point. We did bring it, for, hang on, we did bring it for public comment. We mentioned to the public, the purchase price is 385. We mentioned to the public, there's 25,000 in closing and bond fees, coming up with 410. And Amy did a wonderful job giving her presentation on the site assessment, and what she feels it's going to cost, and how much the state's going to give us of 750. We are now talking about things that are going to cost more than both those numbers. That's where I'm saying, we need to make sure everything's, you know...
I agree.
So, okay, so we're all on the same page, right, right? We're all on the same page, but...
Yeah.
Absolutely.
That's why we have a resolution on the table. Are you ready for the question?
Susan, oh...
No, no, I, no. We have a resolution, it's been made and seconded. You're not allowed discussion at this point. All in favor of canceling the meeting for Wednesday?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Lou says yes, unanimous. Okay, Amy, now you can speak.
Okay. So I just wanted to let everybody know, as I pointed out in the meeting last week, I've been working on this project since 2013, right? So we started with doing a Phase One site assessment. I have interviewed Joe Pirati, who was my representative on behalf of the owners, and they provided me with previous Phase One site assessments. Now, we got the information that the tanks were connected to the Buckeye Pipeline from Joe Pirati, and none of the previous site assessments ever noted anything about this pipe. Right? The owners had to fill out a user questionnaire where they had to cite things, you know, they had to answer questions about the site. Has BP investigated? Do you have above-ground tanks, underground tanks? They filled this out, never once did they talk about owning any pipe. Again, two previous Phase Ones, where they did not cite the pipeline going along with the property. So I don't even know if the current estate realizes. I don't know. But none of that information was provided from 2013 until recently.
Being that this is a special meeting, there is nothing else that we can bring up, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
You don't, no, I'm sorry. Afterward, you can come up and ask us, but the meeting itself is over, Rich. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody else?
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting ended. Rich?